All right, thank you, Brian. Welcome, everyone, to this March 8, 2021, meeting of the Homewood City Council. We are going to start tonight with a proclamation from the mayor for Women in Construction Week.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, council. Is Ms. Garrett here by chance? Okay. If she does not show, we'll make sure to get this to her. This was requested back in January, and it actually is Women in Construction Week this week, March 7. Why is everybody looking strangely behind me?
We hear the thing, the feedback coming off of Zoom up here.
Should I stand further back? Okay. All right, doesn't really matter. Okay. Is that better? See, I can hear you too. Okay, well, we'll work through this.
Yeah.
So, but this week actually is Women in Construction Week, March 7 through the 13th of 2021. So if you don't mind, I'll read this proclamation, and then we will make sure that we get it to Ms. Garrett. Whereas the Greater Birmingham Chapter Number 53 has distinguished itself for 54 years as the voice of women in construction in the Greater Birmingham area, and whereas the work done by the Greater Birmingham Chapter Number 53 has benefited the Greater Birmingham area through community development and educational programs, and whereas the Greater Birmingham Chapter Number 53 has unceasingly promoted the employment and advancement of women in the construction industry, and whereas the construction community represented by the Greater Birmingham Chapter 53 has been a driving force in fostering community development through renovation, beautification projects, promotion of skilled trade careers, and positive vision of the future, and whereas the Greater Birmingham Chapter Number 53 has sought to achieve successful results for Homewood and surrounding areas in a cooperative spirit with other organizations, now therefore I, Patrick McCluskey, Mayor of the City of Homewood, Alabama, do hereby recognize the Greater Birmingham Chapter Number 53 and its many dedicated volunteers and employees for its steadfast work on behalf and support of women in construction, and do proudly proclaim the week of March 7 through the 13th, 2021, as Women in Construction Week, and encourage our citizens to congratulate the organization on its many accomplishments. So, thank you again, and we'll make sure that this gets in the right hands.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. All right. So with that, we will call the meeting to order, and we will start with an invocation from our own Dr. Jones, followed by the pledge from a much more important member of the family, Winston Jones. Everyone will please stand.
If you'll bow your heads with me, please. Mighty and merciful God, as we end this beautiful day in Homewood, we pause to give you thanks and praise. Pray for the peace and prosperity of our city, for the joyful noise of the children in our schools and in our parks, for the comfort and safety, especially during this challenging time for our senior citizens. We pray your many blessings upon our police officers, our firefighters, our park and recreation workers, street and sanitation crews, our librarians, and all the clerks and administrators within Homewood who faithfully serve this city that we are proud to call home. We pray that you will send your wisdom to us, your charity and justice upon this council tonight, along with our mayor and his staff, that we may faithfully serve to promote the well-being of Homewood, and that your commandments will be upheld as we show hospitality to strangers. We ask all of this in your holy name. Amen.
Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Winston. We appreciate it. And Walter, we appreciate you too, but... All right. Ms. Salter, if you will, please call roll.
Yes, sir. Counselor Walton?
Here.
Counselor Gier?
Here.
Counselor Alamon?
President.
Counselor Wolberson?
Here.
He was going to...
He's online.
He changed and said he was on his way. Oh, there he is.
He's here.
Andrew, are you on Zoom?
That's because we turned that down.
Got it. He is on Zoom.
Counselor Sims?
Here.
Counselor James?
Here.
Counselor Smith?
Here.
Counselor Nelms?
Here.
Counselor Andrews?
Here.
Counselor Harden?
Here.
And President Wyatt?
Here.
So you have a forum, everybody present listening.
Thank you very much. Next item is the reading of the minutes for our meeting from February 22, 2021. I would entertain a motion to dismiss with the reading of those minutes that were distributed earlier and for approval of the same.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Nelms, I think. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, it's 11 to zero. Next, we have board vacancies. The medical clinic board closed today. We have two vacancies, and included within those, or for those two vacancies, which are both at-large, we have three applicants. So we will need to do interviews sometime either this week or next week before we get spring break, and I will get with Ms. Salter about that, and we'll let everybody know when we're going to have those interviews. Those are the only board vacancies that I know about. Oh, no, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, you had something. I apologize. You told me.
No, that's okay. Yes, if we can, I'd like to open the beautification board applications up. We've had a couple of members that have left, and due to spring break, I would like to, with your approval, have the application period go all the way through April the 5th. So it'll be four weeks.
And that's fine. I think that night is committees. Do you want to give them one more week to close on the 12th?
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine. Yeah. So if you don't mind doing that, that would be great, and we can...
12th, April 12th at 4:30.
Yeah, and there are numerous vacancies, so, you know, everybody do your best to spread the word.
And if I remember correctly, all those are at-large?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct. Yeah. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other board vacancies that I'm missing? Okay. Next will be additions to the agenda. We do have a handful of items to add for tonight. First is to the committee referral agenda. 09-03-21, request to set public hearing and referral to special issues for consideration for fence variance at 517 Woodland Drive, brought to us by Counselors Jones and Sims. This will go to Special Issues Committee next week. Next item, 10-03-21, request to create city engineer position with the Jefferson County Personnel Board and to fund the position in fiscal year 2021 budget, brought to us by Mayor McCluskey. This will go to Finance. And the last item to committee referral agenda, 11-03-21, request for consideration of contract, request for consideration of contracts per retiring employees, request regarding health insurance. This will also go to Finance, it's brought by myself. Last item to add will be to other new business. This is also 09-03-21, the request to set the public hearing for the fence variance at 517 Woodland Drive, brought to us by Counselors Jones and Sims. That's just to set the public hearing for the item going to committee referral. All right, so with that, I would entertain a motion for approval of the amended agenda. So moved. Motion by Mr. Waltonie?
Second.
Second by Mr. Harden. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to zero. All right. Which brings us to the consent agenda for tonight. I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda. Motion by Ms. Nelms, second by Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also 11 to zero. Which brings us to the old business agenda. First item is 04-02-21, public hearing set for March 8, 2021, at 6:00 PM for consideration of a variance to extend fence taller than eight feet at 1507 Ridge Road, brought to us by Colleen Hindling and Wyatt Pugh of our BEZ department. And we will start with a report from Special Issues. Ms. Smith?
The committee met last week and voted 5 to 0 to refer this item out to the full council without a recommendation pending the public hearing. The motion was made by Ms. Andrews and seconded by Ms. Gier, and again, that was 5 to 0 coming out of Special Issues.
Thank you very much. And so with that, we will open the public hearing and ask anyone that wants to speak for or against this item.
And I believe Ms...
Ms. Hindling?
Yes, I was about to say, is she on Zoom? Oh, no, you're here.
Yeah, just come on up to the microphone.
Okay, I have a, there's a brick wall between my house and the Jefferson house.
I'm going to ask you real quick to sign in, and if you will, just say your name into the microphone so that people on Zoom can know who's talking.
My name's Colleen Hindling, and I am requesting a variance to build a fence that's about 12 feet long, and at the last foot, it's going to be eight feet, four and a half inches instead of eight feet between my house and the neighbor's house. I have to extend the height of the wall to keep my dogs from getting over the fence.
Got it.
And I have all the stuff here if you want to see it.
And I think Brian's got it up on the screen, Steve.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, he's got it up.
That wall is going to be made of expanded metal that looks like this. It's just on top of the brick wall, and the reason I need to do it is because there used to be a six-foot chain link fence on the opposite side of my wall with two feet of barbed wire on top, and that's been removed. So I have to, and the wall steps down as the lot goes, the wall steps down as the lot goes down. So it's not really on there. This is this picture here. This is one side. I have a generator pad that stays level. The wall drops down, and it also decreases in height. So on the left side of my generator, it's only two bricks tall, and the dolls can stand on that and get over the other side.
Okay.
So, and I have a gap in the fence to fill. But if I keep it level across the top like in the plan, this last little section here, because of the slope, is going to be eight feet, four and a half inches.
Okay. All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Hindling.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else here to speak for or against this item tonight?
You can have the whole second if you like. Well, it's only one copy.
All right. Since we don't have anyone else to speak to it, I will close the public hearing and ask the council if they've got any comments or questions.
I don't have any questions. I think it's pretty straightforward, and I would move to approve the variance of the fence height.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from...
A second.
No, sorry. Ms. Gier already got it. I just stalled for a second to fix what I was doing. Okay, motion for Ms. Smith, second for Ms. Gier. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. It was. And an 11 to 0 vote. Resolution 2131. All right, next item, 14-02-21, public hearing set for March 8, 2021, at 6:00 PM for consideration of a front yard fence variance at 1600 Shades Glen Circle, brought to us by Bill Weston and Wyatt Pugh, and another report from Special Issues. Ms. Smith?
Oh, my minutes. Oh, yes, I do. I don't know why. Hold on. Oh, sorry. I missed, I just looked over it. Actually, it's not on here. That's really weird. Uh, yes. That's a good guess.
I think it was 5 to 0.
Yes, it was 5 to 0. I'm pretty sure. I have no idea who made the motion or the second, but yes, so we met last week, and we heard from Mr. Weston about the need for the front yard fence due to his daughter's health condition, and we voted 5 to 0 to send it out without recommendation pending the public hearing tonight. I have no idea who made the motion or the second, but it was 5 to 0. It's not on here, no.
Thank you for that report.
Yeah.
All right, with that, I will open the public hearing, and Mr. Weston, I'm sure you're here to speak to it, so we'll let you go first.
Okay, great. Council members, thank you for letting me come tonight. Just want to, again, I'm seeking your approval for fence variance to put a wooden picket fence in the front yard and a metal fence in the back to help, chain link fence to help protect my children. My wife and I moved here from about three years ago, and we have a child who has, have two children, two and a half-year-old and a 11-month-old. Our two-and-a-half-year-old was born with a condition called spina bifida, which is a defect that occurs in the womb during birth, during, while my wife's pregnant, that impacts her ability to walk. It is a very severe case, but luckily, we've been able to, it's just affecting her lower, from her knee to her ankle, mainly her ankle, and she has to wear AFOs. These AFOs are to help support her ankle so she is able to walk. Well, our, our home is very, has a steep decline, as you can see, to the left, and we're proposing to put a picket fence in the front, close it in, it'll have a gate, remote control, closing, open and close, that will allow us to keep her and, keep the kids on that level area. This area will be also be enclosed with a chain link fence. The biggest thing is just helping our kids stay out of the front cul-de-sac due to the traffic, or the possibility of her stumbling into the cul-de-sac and getting hit. So that's what we're wanting to get approved.
And Mr. Weston, I think we discussed at the committee meeting in the past, when people have requested this, we've always asked if you should, if your family should move from the house?
Yes.
That you would remove the fence?
Absolutely.
When y'all were moving the house? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Is there anyone else here to speak for or against this item? If not, then I'll close the public hearing and ask for any comments or questions from council.
I've got one, Mr. Weston. I think we asked this, or was asked this in Special Issues, your neighbors, you've spoken to them, and you're in a cul-de-sac, that means you've got neighbors all around you, are they okay with that?
Yes, I have three letters from my neighbors giving us full support of the picket fence, if you'd like to see them.
That's all right. I trust you. Okay.
If you want to hand them to Ms. Melody, she can add them, Ms. Melody, Ms. Salter, she can add them to the record. Thank you.
Mr. Sims, did you have, sorry, your hand up? I didn't know if you had your...
No, I was just saying, I'd like to obtain a copy of the...
Oh, okay.
I'll make an attachment to, or do you have that?
No, I was just saying...
For the record?
For the record.
No.
I think as long as they're in the record, you're fine.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right. If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I would move to approve the fence variance with the caveat that if they should move, the fence would come down.
All right, motion by Ms. Smith?
Second.
Second by Mr. Waltonie? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes 11 to 0, and will be resolution 2132. Thank you, Mr. Weston.
Thank you.
All right, next item, 17-02-21, public hearing set for March 29, 2021, at 6:00 PM for consideration to rezone property at 2713 18th Street South from MXD to C4A. The applicant is Michael A. Moran to facilitate the development of a new restaurant. Planning Commission had a vote of 7 to 1 in favor of the, for a favorable recommendation of the rezone. So this item is set for a public hearing on March 29, and we will carry it over tonight for that public hearing at our next meeting. Next item, 13-01-21, bid opening date held on March 1, 2021, at 4:30 for citywide fire system maintenance, brought to us by Chief Hill and Battalion Chief Broadhead. We will start with a report from Finance.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met on March 1 and voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval of accepting the bid from Hiller Fire Protection, which was actually the second lowest bidder for The lowest bidder did not meet all of the requirements as provided by the chief. Made by Counselor Smith, second by Counselor Harden. So 5 to 0 coming out of Finance.
Thank you very much. So we have a motion and second from Finance. Any questions or comments from the council? Yes, Mr. Kendrick?
Yes, I want to make sure that everyone understands that you're rejecting the apparent low bidder because they fail to meet the bid specifications, and you're accepting determining the second bidder to be the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. Resolution sets that out.
Correct. Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. Any questions or comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes 11 to 0, and will be resolution 2133. Next item, 06-02-21, request to amend fiscal year 2021 budgets, brought to us by Robert Brigat, Finance Director, Assistant City Clerk, and Melody Salter, City Clerk, Assistant Finance Director, and another report from Finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met, voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval of this item, made by Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Waltonie. I do want to make one quick correction. Within the minutes, I think, that were, that were distributed, one of the funds was off by one number. So the insurance fund is a transfer from 14-08-482000. We had in the minutes 14-09, so it's 14-08. So I just want to make that correction. It's correct in the resolution, but I just wanted to make that correction.
So in other words, that's, that's not an amendment of the motion coming out from Finance? That's just a correction?
It's a correction. Correct.
Fantastic. All right, so we have a motion from Finance. Any questions or comments? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also 11 to 0, and will be resolution 2134. Next item, 01-02-20, request for updates on Greenspring's revitalization, brought to us by Berkeley Squires, our Public Works Director, and another report from Finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met, voted 5 to 0 to recommend accepting Dunn Construction's proposal for Phase 1 road construction, $2,415,842.05. So 5 to 0 coming out of Finance.
Thank you very much. Do we have another motion now to Finance? Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also 11 to 0, and will be resolution 2135. All right, next item, 09-02-21, request for consideration to add street lighting at 2922 Park Ridge, and I believe we've also added 2911 Park Ridge, brought to us by Counselor Gier. And we will start with a report from Public Safety. Mr. Waltonie?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The committee met and voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval and add a light at 2922 and 2921, I'm sorry, 2911 Park Ridge Road with funding from the seven cents gas tax. The motion was made by Counsel Harden and seconded by Counselor Jones.
All right, thank you very much. We have a motion from Public Safety, from the Public Safety Committee. Any questions or comments from the council? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also 11 to 0, and that will be resolution 2136. All right, next item, 21-02-21, request for consideration of amendment to zoning ordinance to allow for consistency in public input to community gardens, brought to us by myself. And we will start with a report from Planning and Development.
This committee met on March 1 and voted 5 to 0 to refer this item to the Planning Commission without recommendation. Motion was made by Counselor Nelms and seconded by Counselor Waltonie, and I rely on this now, doesn't matter if it has a recommendation or not, we're sending it. No recommendation.
To the Planning Commission?
Correct.
All right. So all we're doing tonight is sending this to the Planning Commission, and they'll deal with it and then send it back to us. And I do want to make a quick comment about it before we vote. I know there was some concern about how this might potentially affect the Pink House. I actually met with the owners of the Pink House this week. They are not seeking a community garden, so this will have no effect on it. It's still something that needs to be changed within the ordinance. It's an important change that needs to happen, but it will not affect the Pink House. The Pink House, actually, they are looking to create one residence on that lot, and there's nothing about a community garden in what they're proposing. So to the extent anyone's concerned about that, this has no effect on them whatsoever. All right, with that, any other questions or comments? Yes, sir, Mr. Simpson?
So just clarification on that for the Pink House. So they're considering a garden, but it doesn't meet the definition of a, of a community garden. Is that correct?
Well, so, no. A community garden is a completely different thing. They are not seeking to make it a community garden. They are working to redo their, to restore their grounds, including all the gardens on the grounds, but there's no community garden part of it.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. All right, any other questions or comments? Okay, all in favor of referring this to the Planning Committee, or Planning Commission, excuse me?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so that is 11 to 0, and we'll go to the Planning Commission, and we will await his return. All right, that brings us to the committee referral agenda. I would entertain a motion for approval of the amended committee referral agenda. So moved. Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Waltonie. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to 0 as well. Which brings us to other new business tonight. First item is 04-03-21, request to set a bid date for the Mamie L. Foster-Rosedale Drive Intersection Improvement Project, brought to us by Wyatt Pugh. Mr. Kendrick, when does, how far out does this need to be?
Well, it's usually a couple of weeks. There's no prescribed timeline.
Yeah, I look back at HHS, there wasn't one set for a public hearing. I thought Mamie, Mr. Pugh, I think, when he was going to do it. Do you know when he wants your bid date?
Mr. Pugh, do you know when, when you want, for the Mamie L. Foster-Rosedale Drive Intersection item? Do you know when you want that bid date to be set for?
No, sir, it doesn't really matter to me. I mean, we can, I can work with whatever is convenient for the council.
So would you like us to set it, I mean, I guess we can set it as soon as the meeting on the 29th, or we can do it the next meeting after that, which is April 12?
So we use the bid dates for finance. Do we have to go into finance?
The bid pack, I guess what I'm trying to say is the bid package is ready to go.
Right.
It's already been prepared, so...
It's just about when it gets, when we set it.
It's going to go for example, whether they wanted to enter that report in meetings as a council.
Oh, okay. Well, why don't we, then why don't we set it for April 5? April 5 at 4:30?
Sure thing, we can make that work.
They do that 4:30 on April 5.
Mr. Wyatt, does that give contractors enough time to put everything together, in your opinion? I think it does.
That's, okay, yeah.
I mean, I know, we ran into, we got one bid from Dunn on the Greenspring thing, for whatever reasons.
So when will it be advertised?
Whenever you want.
Yeah, I was just saying, I think whenever you're ready.
Okay.
You just need to get it to Melody so she can start. Is this one going to be published, or is it just considered our normal classification? You guys, because I gotta go.
Yeah. Yes, sir, it is, but I need your help on this because I'm not, not a city engineer, so I want to, want to do this right, so I don't want to just jump and say, you know... Yes, sir.
Do you want to say the 19th?
Sure.
I mean, is it a Thompson's thing that you have up for the 19th? I just don't know if I have to have the papers when the deadline's up.
Okay, then let's just, in an abundance of caution, let's go ahead and, and set it for April 19.
Okay. No, no, that'd be great.
Okay.
That's, that's better.
Yeah. And let's make, let's just make sure we give ourselves enough time to get it published and advertised.
We're not changing meetings or anything.
No, no, no. But we'll just wait and do it on the nineteenth at four-thirty.
Mr. Wyatt, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Have we seen a picture of what this will actually be doing for the improvement? Have we already seen that in the, in the, in the committee?
I don't think it's come before committee, no, ma'am. I'll be glad to provide that for you, though. I'll have to get the packet from Sane Engineering. They've prepared it.
Okay.
But yeah, I can get that for you.
I would love to see what's, what's being proposed there or what we've already approved, just for information for the neighborhood and for myself, really. So.
Absolutely. And it's essentially straightening the road out, but.
So no crosswalk or any kind of connector for pedestrian?
It actually doesn't, it's not an intersection that goes all the way through. It's just, it's just where the BP station is.
Okay.
Sort of the entrance to the BP station. It's just straighting it. That road kind of curves onto that car wash. It's just straightening it now.
This isn't at the traffic light?
No.
No, it is not.
Any, any crosswalks or the signaling, that's all coming with Eighteenth Street Project right there at that intersection. So.
Yes, sir, that's right.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure thing. Anything else?
That's it. Thank you, Mr. Pugh.
Mr. Pugh, just someone real to get together so we make sure our plans have to advertise it. Okay.
All right. All right. So just to cap, recap, we'll set that bid for April nineteenth at four-thirty. All right. Next item, oh-five-oh-three-twenty-one, request to authorize a council voting delegate to vote at the annual Alabama League of Municipalities Business Meeting in Huntsville on May twelve through fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one.
I wasn't sure if he was going to manage that.
Yeah.
I was gonna, I was gonna nominate Mr. Jones.
Second.
Are you attending this? Are you attending this?
By the way, I did ask him that before I did it.
And just for the, for the new folks, this is just one of the league meetings. Anyone's welcome to attend. We have to designate an official delegate that can vote on behalf of the city, so that's, that's what we're doing. Anyone else that wants to attend is certainly welcome to do so.
Hold on one second. Sharon, is that okay?
I didn't hear, yes.
I don't know when the deadline is, but if you want to attend, if you'll email me, I can register you with a credit card. So I don't know when the deadline to register is.
All right. So we have a motion from Ms. Smith and a second from Ms. Andrus to nominate Mr. Jones as our official voting delegate. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And it's eleven to zero.
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven?
We have an official resolution now. You have to go up.
So that's resolution twenty-one thirty-seven.
Yes.
All right. Next item, oh-six-oh-three-twenty-one, request for consideration of ABC-oh-fifty retail beer off premises only and ABC-oh-seventy retail table wine off premises only license for Buca LLC. I'm thinking of pronouncing that correctly. DBA Buca located at one-eighty-six Oxmore Road, Suites one-hundred-and-one-oh-four, brought to us by Ms. Salter. This item is still waiting on letters from fire and police, so any motion would need to be pending receiving those letters. They will also need a CO, but the fire department will check on, they can't issue their thing until the CO is granted as well. So it would be pending those three items.
I'd like to.
President Wyatt?
I'll, I'll motion to approve contingent upon all three of those conditions.
You can set it, but you can second, buddy.
Mr. Alamon beat you to it. Motion for Mr. Alamon, second for Mr. Wolverton, for having no objection to the issuance of the license pending those three items. Any other discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is eleven to zero. All right. Two more items, oh-seven-oh-three-twenty-one, request to extend business license deadline from March two, twenty-twenty-one to April two, twenty-twenty-one for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one to provide a one-time thirty-day delay from charging penalties. This is the item that Mr. Jones mentioned in committees last week, delaying the date at which penalties start for business licenses to try to help our local small businesses out, given everything that's gone on this year. Any questions or comments about that? If not, I'd entertain a motion. I'd move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Harden. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is also eleven to zero and will be resolution twenty-one thirty-eight. All right. Oh-eight-oh-three-twenty-one, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for period of February twenty-three, twenty-twenty-one through March eight, twenty-twenty-one, brought to us by Robert Burgett, Finance Director, Assistant City Clerk, and Melody Salter, City Clerk and Assistant Finance Director. Is this still Ms. Smith?
It is.
It's coming at me, man.
I looked over the vouchers this morning, had several questions, which Mr. Burgett answered all of them, and I would move to approve payment of the vouchers.
Second.
All right. We have a motion from Ms. Smith, a second from Ms. Gier. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? And it's eleven to zero as well and will be resolution twenty-one thirty-nine. All right. Final item, oh-nine-oh-three-twenty-one, request to set public hearing for fence variance at five-seventeen Woodland Drive, brought to us by Councilors Jones and Sims. This public hearing will be set, I believe, for the twenty-ninth?
I appreciate that we don't have that.
Great. So we will set this for the twenty-ninth, our next meeting on the twenty-ninth. And with that, we are to the end of our agenda for tonight. And we will start with comments. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, guys, again. I do want to say thank you for the vote to extend the business license deadline. That is something that I know Dr. Jones and I had, had talked about and President Wyatt as well. And I think it's really good. We've had a lot of response from the, the business owners that I've talked to that are very appreciative of it and, and they know that, you know, even though they may be doing well, that there are some down the street from them that are not. So I think this is a really good thing. So thank you, guys, for doing that. Just a few updates, real quick. Wanted to say the, I know, I apologize I wasn't able to be here last week for the committee meetings, but we do have the first task force meeting set for next Thursday, the eighteenth. So I will be updating as, as we go through those processes. Wanted to give, let's see, okay, give you an update. I've got meetings with the mayors and city managers from both Fairhope and Auburn, awaiting on confirmation dates, but looking sometime in the next, I'd say, three weeks to be able to get those done. So, you know, the continuing research for all of that is, is gonna continue to go on. So I will bring you as much information as I can, as quickly as I can, but those meetings are, are pending. And then want to say happy International Women's Day to all of the ladies, the exceptional women that both live and work in Homewood. We have five of them here with us tonight. So I really do want to say thank you to Ms. Salter, Ms. Gier, Ms. Smith, Ms. Nelms, and Ms. Andrus behind me for all the, the hard work that you guys put in to this. I know sometimes it's not easy, but we really do appreciate you guys. So, and I think that is it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Gualtney?
All right. First, Counselor Jones, I assume you'll need the five feet slot?
We need thirty minutes, please.
Thirty minutes. I will set public safety for five-thirty, and we will need, you know what, we actually may, one moment, please. Oh, yeah, we will. We'll need fifteen minutes, so the next one can go at five-forty-five. I know you'll be shocked, but I have no comments this evening. So, next.
Thank you very much. Ms. Gier?
Yes, thank you. So I'd just like to start out by saying that the new safety features on the back intersection of the middle school are terrific. They've helped in a lot of ways. The one-way street is much better delineated. The crosswalk paint makes it really clear that it's a four-way stop and that kids are coming from all directions. And the four-way stop is really appreciated. I walked by the other day and three or four neighbors commented, so much needed. Thank you, guys, for approving that. And then finally, Mayor McCluskey mentioned a few weeks ago that he and I had met along with Doug Clapp, a member of the Rosedale Community Development Corporation, and we discussed Rosedale from the perspective of the two thousand seven Revitalization and Preservation Plan. That plan was presented to the city in two thousand seven, but the goals that were established by the plan were never really made operational. Mayor McCluskey gave us the okay to reinstate something similar to that original Rosedale Revitalization Committee, to review where things stand today in Rosedale, and to make some plans and recommendations to move Rosedale forward in various ways to support the goals from their neighborhood. So we've spoken to a lot of folks around greater Birmingham area over the past few months, people who've played various roles revitalizing their communities in similar ways that Rosedale would like to be revitalized. And most recently, we've connected with Mashonda Taylor and Joe Ayers of the Woodlawn Foundation. They have agreed to assist us with planning organizationally and structurally, the types of efforts that we need, the groundwork we need to establish to begin to put together and to support some of the things that we'd like to do. So we're very excited about that. So we'll be meeting in the next few weeks. We have not set our first organizational meeting, nor have we decided exactly who needs to be a part of this meeting, but that's what we're doing, and we'll, we'll meet in the next few weeks. And we're all really looking forward to that. So I just thought I'd give that update. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Alamon?
Just want to echo the mayor's comments about International Women's Day, and I also want to take the time to appreciate women internationally, and so immigrant women, who contribute to our community here in Homewood. And at HICA Today, we celebrated International Women's Day, and we had a hundred women participate. And really, we were able to have a virtual event, so we had hundreds of folks participate. I also want to take the time to remind everyone that the library is celebrating eighty years this year, and that they are asking that folks send in a library, the library, a birthday card that will be displayed in the art gallery. So if you can, show the library some love. It can be dropped off or mailed. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wolverton?
Just gonna keep it real simple. I just want to say thank you to all the women for being mothers, and my wife had a particularly difficult day. Our youngest has been sick most of the weekend and been taking a nap. And, yeah, so I was trying to assist that earlier tonight, but I know it's a thankless job, oftentimes, staying at home. And so I want to thank my wife in particular. That's it.
You need to set Public Works?
Public Works. Everything's been carried over fifteen minutes? At five-forty-five. Is that right? Okay.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Wolverton. Mr. Sims?
Thank you, President Wyatt. So I would just like to echo the mayor's comments about the Beautification Board. Hopefully, you know, at large, residents will express their interest in the Beautification Board and submit their interest to the mayor. But also, I ask that all of you as counselors, you know, help find great candidates and put them forth for consideration, because we really do need some additional membership, and we really have some great opportunities to continue to make our city, you know, even better. So please give consideration to that. And also, similarly, on the business side, the Beautification Board Quarterly also does beautification awards and honoring businesses. And so we're looking for people to apply so we can recognize them for the great job they do maintaining their property and representing Homewood in the way they do with their business front. So please give consideration to businesses in your ward and encourage them to apply as well for a beautification award. And finally, just again, it's been referenced several times, but so grateful for all the leadership and service of, of women in our community. And thank you for, you know, helping us learn to be, you know, even better individuals as we are inspired by you. So thanks, and happy International Women's Day, and come on.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sims. Dr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee will meet at five, and I'll make a quick comment about Women's Day. We're all influenced by a lot of different women. And my mother, I remember seeing the picture of her medical school class from nineteen-fifty-six when she graduated. There were three women in her class, and she has continued to stay involved in the Medical Association. And she told me recently that about sixty percent of the class now is female. And it's so, you know, there are lots of people that came, came before us that made those type of impacts. So I was very much influenced by, by her and, and being willing to, to be, to be there, you know, when it was kind of a tough kind of situation. So secondly, looking forward to getting together as a council. And I think what we should do is maybe just think about what, what do we want to accomplish in our term here on the council? I've been on a lot of different councils, and some of them have wanted to focus on nothing but infrastructure. And I always warned them, I said, at the end of four years, you're going to have nothing to show for it, even though we're gonna have, you're gonna be, have accomplished a lot. So I just want everybody to think about that as to what, you know, what do we want to do? And we all have different gifts, and even within our ward, Mr. Sims and I have different skill sets, but we, we want to figure out how do, how can we complement each other within the ward and then within the city? Because we are a unique city in how large the council is. So we need to leverage that and, you know, and leverage our strength. So that's all I wanted to say. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Smith?
Yes, I will set special issues for six. And Mr. Sims had asked me to, I think we're going to take an item off the table on Monday night, so I'm going to go ahead and say thirty minutes on that. And then the Historical Preservation Commission is meeting tomorrow night by Zoom at seven o'clock. I know last time there was a bit of a snafu with the, with the Google link, I mean, with the Zoom link. Eddie Griffin just had some technical difficulties. So hopefully this time it will not happen again. I think he's got it all figured out. And I had the pleasure of going to the Valley Hotel on Saturday night, and it is lovely. And man, was it full of people. So clearly, people were looking for, were glad to have it open. So it was nice to be there and see it, and I was really impressed.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Ms. Nelms?
I don't have anything tonight, but thanks, everybody, and enjoy this weather.
No kidding. Ms. Andrus?
Well, I do want to mention, Counselor Jones said that to me last week about having your list and your ideas and what you want to do. And I'm looking forward to having that discussion on Saturday. I have my list. And the reason it's important is because things take a while. I think this one thing that you don't know coming into this job is how long things take. So today, I was thrilled to get a text message from my cook counselor, Barry Smith, with a picture of the light going up at Windsor and Lake Shore. So that has been two years in the making. There was a, which just goes to show you, again, there was a traffic light, and there was paint on the ground, but there was no button to press for pedestrians to go across. But because Ward Five is surrounded by Aldott Roads, nothing we do is simple. And that took about, that went into the budget a year and a half, two years ago, almost two years ago. So that took, I distinctly remember sitting on my deck, right when the pandemic had started, on the phone with Alicia Hall at Aldott a year ago, and her telling me what all we needed to forward through. So that just really, again, to his point, things don't just happen. They take a lot of effort and a lot of pushing and so, but then one day you have a traffic light or a pedestrian light, and you're thrilled. So anyway, thank you for that text, and I really was glad to hear that. I'm going to set PND for six-thirty. And just real quick, we had our Unified Command Call as we do every Monday at eleven o'clock, and the numbers are on a downward trajectory. The one concern that Dr. Wilson shared was that we do have fifty-three of the UK variants cases in Alabama, but that our surrounding neighbors are really high in that variant, Florida and Georgia. So just be, you know, just be extra careful as you go into spring break. Don't forget to socially distance where you're masked, et cetera, if you travel. But the main focus right now is vaccine, vaccine, vaccine. And you'll start seeing more and more, you know, I've had the question asked me several times, what's a, what's the best way to get on a list or get a vaccine? I, I will tell you that one thing, one strategy is to get on the Walmart website after midnight, and that's when they load up all their locations. And then consider traveling short, you know, just somewhere outside. just somewhere outside of the Birmingham city limits, just make it a location or something. So those are two, two suggestions. There's also a Facebook page by Erin Boden, a group that is helping people sort of, you know, when somebody has unopened, they've opened up a, you know, pallet of vaccines and they need to fill them, things like that, you'll, you'll see that there. So look for that Facebook group by Erin Boden, she's a Homewood resident. One interesting point Dr. Hicks made, which was kind of taken, it took me aback a little bit, was that last year, you know, he made the mention that opioid use was at its highest in the county ever, that we had the highest number of ODs from opioid abuse in the last year, and obviously, you know, the, the toll that this pandemic is taking in so many different ways, that was a really striking statistic. So anyway, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Andrews. And just to clarify, you're just pointing to like one page in that book for your list, right? Not the whole book?
This is my, yeah. This is my list for Saturday, this is what I want to talk about on Saturday.
You got it, okay. All right, Mr. Hardin?
Sure. One, I'm always grateful for the employees of Homewood that keep our city, city moving. Number two, there was a, in eighteen ninety-nine, there was a essay by a guy named Hubbard that did something called, "Give it to, to, a message to Garcia." And if, it was a story of a, during the Spanish-American War, that they had to get information to the, some guys on the other side of the Cuban island, and they said, "Give it to the Garcia guy, he's going to get the job done." My perspective is, "Give it to Jennifer, and she'll get the job done." So, and I'm grateful for all she does for both our ward and our city. I also want to thank Counselor Wolverton. I didn't realize that the Boy Scouts have a one-year warranty on, on a, on a volleyball net, but apparently they do, and so a couple of Sundays ago, well, before that, some kids broke the net by holding on to it, which is pretty hard to do, by the way. And so my son and Matt, the city employee, and I went out there, and Counselor Wolverton, I have pictures of it, he helped us fix that. It took, it took, had to re-thread the, the cable through the net, and it took a while, but we got it done, and, and so apparently that one-year warranty is, is still good for the Boy Scouts. So I'm grateful for Counselor Wolverton stepping in there.
Does it start over now that it's been repaired from this?
No.
All right, thank you, everybody. Just a couple of quick reminders. We will obviously have committee meetings next week, but everyone remember that the week after that is a little week off for spring break, so our next full council meeting will not be till the twenty-ninth. And don't rush out of here, because we've got to do pictures for the website, so just remember that. Mr. Wolverton?
Yes, I did forget one, one quick thing, so I did want to thank Mr. Hardin and his son, and let's see, who else was out there that day? Matt, yep, for coming out and fixing it, because it, I, I believe it happened on a Friday evening that it was broken, and that was Sunday afternoon, so. But I, I did also want to just put out there, we don't have a firm date yet, but we are going to go ahead and renew our Street Safety Day at Hall Kent. It will most likely be one of the Fridays in April, so it'll be coming up in the next month, month and a half. Just an opportunity to partner with, with the school and with the police department and continue to impart some wisdom and hopefully help teach kids how to be safe, and obviously we have a nice, nice park there, and we want, we want people to be drawn to it, but we want everybody in that whole area to be safe doing so. So that's it.
Thank you. I have one final thing, if anyone is interested. The Homewood Athletic Foundation is going to be holding Corna Palooza on, oh no, I'm blanking on the date. Eighteenth? That's right. Yeah, that's right. Yeah. On April eighteenth, and I was talking with them today, they actually have eighty teams so far. And, yeah, so it's, so, but there are still spots available. If anyone is interested in having a team, they, they are not cutting it off anytime soon, so they're, they're thinking they might even hit a hundred, so.
Are you asking me if I'll be on your team?
Unfortunately, I have to work at the event, so I, I will not be playing, nor would anyone want me to be their teammate. It's a pizzeria GM. So, 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 yeah, if anyone wants to be a team, you can let me know, I'll get you in touch with the right person, or just contact Jeremy Bernstein directly, but if anyone's interested. All right, so with that, we will adjourn our meeting for tonight, and we'll be back here on the twenty-ninth for our next council meeting.